Good evening and welcome everyone to the Planning Board meeting for Wednesday, May 8, 2024, in the 1820 courtroom at 26 Court Street. Pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023, an Act relative to extending certain COVID-19 measures adopted during the state of emergency, signed into law on March 29, 2023. This meeting will be conducted via remote and in-person participation. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public and/or parties with a right and/or requirement to attend this meeting can be found on the town's website. Before we go into our agenda items this evening, I do believe we have an introduction.
Yes, so I am pleased to announce that we have Lauren Lin now, who is our Deputy Director of Planning and Development. Lauren comes from the Barrett Planning Group, who actually worked with us on the MBTA Communities project that we have in Plymouth, and she also was previously the Planning Director in Cohasset, Massachusetts. So, welcome.
Welcome to the TE.
Thank you, everyone. It's lovely to be here. Thank you.
Okay, also, I believe last night for Mr. Peck this evening, and I want to thank him for all his service on the Planning Board with us and dealing with us and helping us out through the whole process. David, thank you very much.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Just want to say thank you for the year together. And I entered this year in the Planning Board with two major objectives. One was to get the master plan approved at town meeting, and also to get the ADU bylaw approved at town meeting. I'm two-for-two, and thank you all for the sort of being good colleagues and planning together. And I'm not going away. I'm hoping to stay active in planning in one or more ways, but good luck to the candidates this coming May 18th. So, thank you very much.
Oh, you're very welcome. Absolutely. Thank you, David.
You're welcome.
Okay, so first on our agenda...
Thank you from afar, David. I just want to say thank you from afar. I am here, and I wanted to say thank you very much for being my buffer on the Planning Board. I appreciate it very much.
Okay, thank you, Birghetta.
Okay, thank you. So first on our agenda this evening, we have administrative notes. We have the minutes of April 10, 2024. Questions, comments on the minutes of 2024? April 10, 2024.
I have no comments. I move approval. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Owen Faver, Steve?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Ms. Keane?
I abstain.
And myself, yes. Next on our agenda, we have the minutes of April 24, 2024.
I looked them over, and they also look fine. Well done, so I move approval of the minutes of April 24. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Owen Faver, David?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Ms. Keane?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And I abstain. Next on our agenda this evening, we have covenants, plans, and releases. We have Form A Plan, A4878, Whitman Homes Incorporated, map 116, lots A59 and A60. Divide to create lots 4-484 through 4-507. Questions or comments on Form A Plan, A4878? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Owen Faver, Ms. Keane?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. Next on our agenda this evening, we have a Cedarville Steering Committee Appointment applicant, John Costello. Mr. Costello, how are you this evening?
Excellent.
Would you like to come to the microphone, please, sir?
Good evening.
Good evening. Would you like to make any initial comments, or...
Yes, actually, I started going to the Steering Committee meetings down at Cedarville probably around the first of the year. I currently just, I'm actually a new resident. I moved there in August. I came down from the North Shore, originally a Dorchester guy. But I'm really into keeping my mind active. So when I retired from the state, I was actually a fraud investigator for the state and saved the state. One project I did save the state, $250 million over five years. So I was really big on reading regs, following through on regs, and that's kind of like my forte. So anyhow, when I went to the meeting, it seemed to me there was a lot of mishmash and no direction for the meeting, and I said that if there was an opening, I'd be interested in getting on there, because there was no, like, Robert's following the law of how a meeting should be run, and somebody didn't want to sign off on the meeting minutes, and they were going to hold the whole meeting for two months because somebody didn't want to sign off, and I'm like, that's really not how we move forward here. So I decided I'd get involved.
Appreciate that. Any of the members have questions? For Mr. Costello?
I have a Dorchester question. Where in Dorchester did you come?
You want Parish?
Yes.
St. Greg's.
St. Brendan's?
St. Gregory's.
St. Greg's, okay.
Yeah, St. Greg's.
Because we lived in St. Williams before it disappeared, and our kids lived...
We were marching band guys?
Yeah, the kids lived down, my son and grandkids are in St. Anne's, St. Greg's.
My sister was in St. Anne's when she first got married.
What, in St. Margaret's?
St. Margaret's, okay. Columbia Road. But that's where the church was.
Anybody else in here have relatives from Dorchester?
I don't think anybody does not.
I do. My parents are from Dorchester.
There you go.
Or they're supposed to, they say it Dorchester.
Dorchester, yeah.
Dorchester.
I'm a dot guy. Dot rat, whatever, yeah.
Anybody else have any questions for the gentleman from Dorchester?
Yes.
I do.
Please, Kyle. Kyle first, then to you, Ms. Keane.
Thank you. So in Dorchester, what types of community activities were you involved in, or was there any other public activities that you were doing while you were living in Dorchester?
Okay, I was the Secretary of the VFW Auxiliary for Swamp Scott.
Okay, that's all I needed to hear.
Okay, sorry. Hopefully that's not a bad thing.
He says there's a Bruins game on the seventh day.
No, 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 no. I'm a veteran, so the minute you mention that, you're good in my book. Thank you for your service.
Ms. Keane, please.
I wanted to thank Mr. Costello for the presentation he just made. I think that the comments that you made have been noted by multiple people on this Steering Committee and who attend those Steering Committee meetings, and I appreciate the fact that you recognize that the Steering Committee could use your expertise to organize itself to be a little bit more effective. And so I appreciate your comments, and I also think that it would be wonderful to work with the appointee from the Planning Board a little more closely to achieve those goals. So thank you for your application and for doing this work. You've got a big job ahead of you.
Thank you for noticing.
Yes, Steve, please.
I'm very excited to see someone who's actually coming before us who's attended a bunch of the meetings. That's a very important aspect, that you're jumping into this with at least some knowledge as to what you're getting yourself into.
I'm quite aware of it. I've read everything, and I've read the plan from 1991, actually.
Well, that's fantastic. So I ask this question of every Steering Committee applicant who comes before us, and I'm not going to change regardless, so what is your understanding, perception, or belief as to what the Steering Committee should be doing?
I think my perception is the Steering Committee should be the eyes and ears of the community that they live in, and they're not the people that are going to set the law, but they're the people that are going to bring the thoughts and the feelings of the community forward to the people who are setting the laws moving forward. And I think currently, right now, there is nobody down in my area that's taken that lead to bring us to the year that we live in right now of 2024. I think a lot of the folks are still living in 1990, and that's kind of like where it's all about. We have to move forward.
I think that's a wonderful answer. Thank you very much.
All righty.
Okay, also, you'll be in the process of working on a new Cedarville Steering Committee master plan, right? Mr. Hartman?
So we're kind of in that in-between area now, where we're starting with the regular overall master plan, and it almost seems like we should not be engaged in anything. I think it should follow, the update should follow...
It had started.
But again, there are some things, they have a questionnaire they wanted to circulate. We're looking at that, so, yes. But again, I think the master plan has the priority at this point.
I would agree, but when the master plan is completed in the next 18, 19 months through the process, or maybe longer, depending on how the process goes, then that would be the next Steering Committee that...
Yes.
...would be done on, correct?
Yes.
Okay. All right, anybody have anything else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to support.
I'd like to make a motion to support.
Second.
We have a motion to support and a second to appoint John Costello to the Cedarville Steering Committee. Owen Faver, Ms. Keane?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Kyle?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you very much for volunteering.
Thank you very much.
And looking forward to hearing from you. Thank you very much. Don't forget to be sworn in at the Town Clerk's office. Okay?
Okay.
Thank you. All right, next on our agenda this evening, we have ZBA Case 4125, Ryan Hamilton, Saquish Holdings LLC, Zero Gurnett. Special permit required per Section 206-2G, period 2, to allow new construction within the floodplain overlay district. Good evening, sir, how are you?
Good evening, members of the board. How are you?
Now, just before you start, I just want everybody to know that's watching on TV that's here, we are advisory to the Zoning Board of Appeals. They will also hear this case and make the final adjudicary decision. We will be advisory to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Yes, understood.
Yes, sir, please, continue.
So let me just... So if we could get that up on the screen, please? So, good evening. My name is Ryan Hamilton. I am one of the property owners and one of the managing partners with Saquish Holdings LLC, and I'll be presenting this project on behalf of the LLC here tonight. I'll go over the existing conditions, proposed conditions, and then I'd like to touch on a few comments from initial reviews from a couple of departments, and then could just open it up to general questions and any comments you guys might have. So, seeing on the screen here, this locust map shows the location of the property. The house is located at the base of Gurnett Point on the road out towards Saquish Beach. There's a cluster of structures there in that in-between section. It's the last house before you enter out to Saquish Beach. You'll see the property sits between Central Ave, which just sits to the east of the house, and then to the west of the house is Plymouth Bay. Is that me? Uh-huh. Oh, gosh. All right, so this locust map here is just the FEMA floodplain. It shows the site and the building entirely within the VE15 floodplain. And then, let's do a couple of photos, just another aerial view here. This is the structure here that we're talking about. All right, so this is the existing conditions plan of the property. So the house sits on just under 13,000 square feet of lot area. The building and the deck have a combined footprint of about 865 square feet. Site topography for the project ranges from around elevation four towards Plymouth Bay, and then at its highest, it's about elevation 10, just to the north and south of the property. So the property is entirely residentially zoned. It's R20SL, and it's located, like I said before, it's completely within the FEMA VE15 floodplain, as well as entirely within the coastal dune resource area. Couple of the existing conditions I want to just point out, there's a well to the east of the property, there's an existing cesspool just to the north of the property, or I'm sorry, to the structure, and then on the east side, there's a concrete cistern for stormwater storage for use for the building. Let me scroll back up to some photos. So there's a couple, just some photos of the four sides of the structure. Just a little bit of background on the house itself. The house was built in the 1950s and was used as a seasonal home by the same family up until we acquired it in December of 2022. You'll see, you know, in the photos here, the building over time has kind of fallen into a bit of disrepair, and just within the last couple storms has seen some considerable damage, mostly from the Plymouth Bay side up over the deck, but previous owners did their best to somewhat maintain the property, but improvements were never made over the 75 years or so that they owned it. So this is the proposed conditions plan. So the existing home's going to be demolished in its entirety. The existing cesspool to the north of the house will be removed to make way for what's shown on here for the proposed septic system. The well just to the east of the building will be abandoned, and a new well will be drilled in the northeast corner of the property to conform with setbacks to that proposed tight tank septic system. So the proposed structure will be built on the exact same location and footprint as the existing structure. The proposed structure is about 854 square feet. That's combined deck and building, slightly less than the existing structure due to just some reconfiguring of the decks for egresses to the east and the west, which you should see on this plan. The proposed first floor elevation will be elevation 18. That puts the lowest structural member at elevation 17 to conform to the building code for construction in the VE15 floodplain. This is just a planting restoration plan for post-construction, revegetating disrupted These next two sheets are just some architectural, I don't want to say preliminary, but some early-on architecturals for the project. You'll see in the top there, we've got our three floor plans for the first floor, which shows your egresses to the front and the rear, the second floor, and then third floor would be some of an open-top roof deck. The bottom left here is the piling foundation plan. One thing on this is that we've designed the structure to sit on top of nine 12-inch timber piles in lieu of about 30 that the current structure is sitting on. So here are just some four elevation views. This gives you an idea just on, you know, a little bit about what the building might look like, front, rear, left side, right side. The top right corner shows kind of a section cut through the building. That gives you an overall building height of about 32 and 1/2 feet. There's a note there showing the lowest, you know, structural member at elevation 17 per the code. And then with this being some early-on architecturals, we've since kind of refined the structural design, and a couple of things I want to point out. So for the decks on the front and the rear, we've redesigned the first floor structure with some continuous structural steel beams that will span from east to west, which will allow us to eliminate knee braces underneath the decks, as well as pilings to support the deck, so there'll be simple cantilevers on both sides, again, reducing the overall impact from a permanent side, you know, to just strictly nine timber piles. We've also taken a look at bracing for the foundation system, and just with the sensitivity of the area, we've eliminated the timber cross bracing. Again, I know it shows here, but for the final structural plans, the cross bracing will be eliminated, and we've used timber knee braces in place of those, which will basically just, from an environmental standpoint, allow, you know, just natural migration of the coastal dune underneath the structure, you know, post-construction. So we've spent a lot of time structurally, just analyzing everything and creating something that, you know, post-construction just creates as little impact as possible. So after this, I mean, the basis of the zoning denial, as you said in the beginning, was for special permit required for work within the coastal floodplain. So, you know, in regards to the, in regards to that denial letter, like I said, we've spent a lot of time with our environmental consultant, civil engineers, structural engineers, surveyors, even town departments, just kind of discussing this overall project. And, you know, we've, you know, we've been, we're a little constrained to where we can locate the building, you know, given the environmental impacts and the sensitivity of the area, rebuilding within the same footprint, in the same location, you know, seemed to be the prudent choice. So, you know, that's kind of what we show here, and I know on the, on the, you know, when you look at the proposed conditions plan, you know, there's obviously, looking at it from a 2D standpoint, there is room to move the structure to the north, but again, with the sensitivity of the area and the environmental impacts, you know, moving the structure into vegetated areas would have kind of created a bigger environmental impact. And so, again, locating the building within the same footprint and elevating the structure was kind of the final decision for that. So there was a few comments from just three departments prior to this meeting I just wanted to touch on quickly. The Fire Department, they sent a note just about smokes and carbon oxides. I mean, those will be installed as per building code, no issues there. Health Department, we are still working through our septic disposal permit. Hopefully in the next week or two, we'll have that submitted to Karen for review, but we, you know, we have not got the Health Department anything yet for the septic system. Again, our engineers had conversations with the department, as well as conservation, to eventually settle on that tight tank design. And then the last department that made a few comments was the Department of Public Works. Their first comment was the applicant must receive Conservation Commission approval prior to the start of work. So since we had a conservation hearing on April 8, project was approved, order of conditions was issued, it's been registered with the County Registry of Deeds. We've also been, just prior to that conservation hearing, we did receive approval from Mass, Division of Fisheries and Wildlife as well, with some time constraints which got adopted into the order of condition. So that order of condition collectively captures comments from Natural Heritage, as well as the town's special conditions for the project. I did submit a copy of that, you know, prior to this meeting. And then the last comment from Department of Public Works is in regards to a de-watering plan or de-watering controls for the excavation of the septic system. You know, given the site grade and the elevations, the septic system to the north, site grade is around elevation 10, so with a high tide at elevation 6, water within the excavation will be tidal dependent. So the intent is to excavate on an outgoing tide, do our stone grave prep, set the tank, you know, prior to the next incoming tide. So, you know, de-watering is not possible. You know, if we miss our window and the tide comes back in, we would just have to catch it on another falling tide. So in regards to the DPW's stormwater or, you know, groundwater control, being able to, you know, obviously pump the ocean is not possible. And then the last comment was a street opening permit is required for all projects. I mean, if this is a formality, it's definitely something that I can apply for, but with, you know, no public utilities anywhere near the project or any excavations, you know, outside of the property bounds, I'm not sure if that's still required, or if... It's not required, okay. And that was the last question from DPW. So that's what I have for the proposed work.
All right, thank you.
If you have any comments or questions.
Before I bring it to the board for questions, we typically ask the audience and anybody on Zoom...
And also if I can jump in, too.
And Lee Hartman can also jump in and give comments also. So Lee, would you like to go first, please?
Thank you. So this is our, it's in the flood zone, and our bylaw requires any project with more than 301 square feet of change to the building requires a special permit. It's something, again, I've mentioned before, we argued with the state that was a little excessive, because if you're complying with building code and with the FEMA flood requirements, I'm not sure what else we'd be doing, but again, they're here for a special permit only because of the flood zone, and they have work over 301 square feet. So just a couple of points with what they're proposing. The footprint is exactly the same as the footprint they have now. It's still going to be one bedroom. It's a one-bedroom now, it will be a one-bedroom when the renovations are done. They are going to two floors, but again, it still stays as one bedroom. As was pointed out, they're going to take their old non-conforming cesspool and install a tight tank. This may be subject to demolition delay. It's not in your report, but we'll highlight that. So if the building was constructed prior to 1949, I know the applicant said he thinks it was somewhere in the 50s, so again, there'll need to be a discussion with the Building Department and the applicant. So if it's prior to 49, then it's over 75 years, and they'll need to apply for demolition delay. So we'll highlight that in the report. Also, CONCOM has signed off on this and said that they don't have any issues, too. So again, from compliance with the flood bylaw, we don't see an issue, and we're recommending that you recommend favorably to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hartman. Is there anybody in the audience here this evening wishing to speak on this proposal? Seeing no one, I will go to Zoom. Is there anybody on Zoom?
Besides me?
Yes, besides Ms. Keane, yes.
I'm not seeing anybody looking to be recognized.
Okay, so I will now bring it to the board for comments and questions. Ms. Keane?
Well, thank you, Mr. Grandy. Thank you for your presentation. This is an ambitious project on a beautiful piece of land, and I wish you the best with it. But I have a couple of comments, as my board would anticipate, that have to do with the tight tank and the well. I know that you've had some conversations with the Director of Health and Human Services, or Public Health, but if you familiarize yourself with Title V, tight tanks are not allowed in a coastal dune. And so you're going to have to work through that, not necessarily just with Karen Keane, but the Board of Health will be hearing that and voting on that. And secondarily, the well that you're going to be drilling, that also falls under the Board of Health, and I'm not sure what you will do if you don't find potable water in your drilling, and I would anticipate that you'll have a plan for that. So otherwise, my comments are just to wish you luck in front of the Board of Health, and that you really should do your homework, because I know that multiple properties have been denied tight tanks on a coastal dune, because that's the way Title V is written. And it's really not the VE floodplain, because I know that you're going to wait it, and you will meet those requirements. I saw that in your presentation in our packet, but it's the coastal dune that you need to pay attention to. So with that, I wish you the best. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Ms. Keane. David, please.
I anticipate your answer, but will this structure have gutters, and how will you deal with roof drainage?
Yeah, so, I mean, to, there'll be a small holding tank, not a, it'll be up above the floodplain structure, but a small holding tank, but a lot of the gutters will just go natural out into the beach. We plan to, again, drill a well. There obviously is a concern for if you can or cannot get potable water. Others out there have had success drilling wells, septic systems as well, so until we drill... drill it and get some samples, it's hard to tell. But there will be some, you know, rainwater storage held on the property, but most of it is really just going to be brought out, water, which is kind of typical for a lot of people out there, just for potability.
Okay, thanks. That's what I anticipated because it's the same footprint, so therefore it's the same roof.
Correct.
Area draining, so it's kind of no change, but just need to be careful with rainwater.
Yeah, because, yeah, collecting water can be overwhelming at times. So we'll likely collect some, but mostly have storage on-site for water to be brought out for drinking and maybe cooking purposes. But the hope is that we can get a well that, you know, isn't loaded with a lot of sodium and you can use it for shower and, you know, toilet use, things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, David. Cal, please.
So my only question is in regards to the equipment going out. Did you need any special permit for the equipment and equipment size that you'd be bringing out onto that area?
Yeah, so in the order of conditions, there's kind of the standard language for, you know, obviously there's no restrictions on heavy equipment, but, you know, biodegradable hydraulic fuels in all of our equipment. You know, they don't want equipment left on the beach overnight, things like that. You know, in storm events, we'll move equipment from the area, but, you know, obviously it takes heavy equipment to build these buildings. So pile installations will be done, you know, with a crane. And then, you know, once the pilings are in, you know, with the building being elevated, a crane will probably be on-site for most of the duration of work. Small excavators here and there to just do some site cleanup and restoration, obviously excavation of the septic system. But the intent is to not leave, you know, excess equipment out there that's not needed throughout the duration of work. So yes, there will be a crane out there. We've got restrictions for, you know, no work between April 1st and September 1st. So, you know, once the season kind of passes is when we'll start to bring, you know, equipment out there to begin work. So, but the equipment will all be certified with biodegradable hydraulic fluid, which was one of the stipulations in the special conditions. But as far as, you know, restrictions of equipment access out there, you know, luckily this, you know, this house is in an area where it's not super congested or four-wheel-drive only, it's still very accessible for trucks and equipment.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Steve, please.
Thank you. It's a very unique piece of property. It was a bit of a challenge to get out there. But in going out there, one of the things that is very clear is that, given the storm rise that comes off the bayside, the dunes are absolutely carrying through. So as you raise this, the dune is going to continue to develop underneath and will eventually overwhelm, including where you have both the proposed septic and the well. So I guess my question is, what, how has that been factored into the design of the water systems, which are, as everyone has spoken about, probably the primary concern when we talk about anything built in the coastal areas?
You're talking about like utilities built into the floodplain?
Correct.
So, I mean, obviously one of, you know, the well is the well. You know, if that gets overtaken in a storm, eventually it'll recirculate its way out if saltwater gets in. You know, to just comment on the tight tank system, you know, again, our, Paul Brogna, who's, you know, my civil engineer on the project who's doing the septic design, he has had some, you know, off-the-record conversations with Karen, you know, to, yes, so the, you know, she's off-the-record confirmed that, you know, the cesspool on the property is pre-existing, it's been grandfathered in. There's still that gray area of, obviously, you know, tight tanks aren't a favorable septic system for any structure. But, you know, given the elevations of the dunes and, you know, the concern for flooding over, you know, a conventional septic system is just out of the question. You know, you'll have leaching tanks and chambers all over the marsh. So what we've done is, will be submitted with our septic disposal permit is we've designed a helical hold-down system for the pre-cast tight tank. So we've accounted for the buoyancy of the tank in an empty state, completely submerged with no soil coverage, and we've created a supplementary hold-down system for that tight tank. So there's absolutely no way that that tight tank could, you know, could pop out of the ground, it's going to move, it's going to shift. So that's, you know, completely locked in. And then the structure being up on piles, you know, eliminates the concern for, you know, a flood pushing or, you know, getting that thing toppled out into the marsh. So, you know, the well is the well. There's nothing we can really do to protect that. But the tight tank system, yeah, we've got a full design in place for helical hold-downs and a cable restraint system to keep that from popping out of the ground because the buoyancy is real. And like you said, with the site grades at elevation 10, you know, a tide, we've had water through the house. So, you know, water up at elevation 13, 14 is not uncommon, you know, in that stretch of land. So that has been taken into consideration.
Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. The existing home, I believe the elevation is at 12.1.
Yep.
Correct?
Yeah, finished floor.
So you're raising up five feet, basically.
Yes.
To elevation 17 to the bottom of your support structures.
Yeah, six feet to the top of the finished floor.
Right. So when you say elevation 15, is that the velocity zone?
That's the FEMA velocity zone for that area.
Right. So just for anybody watching, can you just give a quick definition of what the velocity zone means?
Oh, you're asking me?
Yes.
So, yeah, so the, yeah, so, I mean, FEMA establishes flood elevations for different areas depending on what their exposure is. So, you know, if you go back to this FEMA... Let's go back to the FEMA. So if you, you know, it's hard to read this, but just within that FEMA map, there's probably four different floodplanes. You know, out around the Gurnett Point, the elevation is as high as 18 for the base flood. And building code requires you to build, you know, two-foot-plus the base flood elevation. So, you know, where our site is, is elevation 15. You can see the, you know, the upper part of Gurnett is, you know, outside of a flood zone, so that's, you know...
So all the mechanicals in this entire new structure will be above elevation 17?
Correct. Besides, you know, obviously...
Is there any, is there electricity out there? No.
No, it's all solar power.
So it's all going to be solar power?
Yeah, so like battery storage, all the utilities for the solar system are all going to be...
So your storage battery, so to speak, if you have any, are going to be stored above elevation 17?
Correct, yeah.
It's mandated in the code anyway, right?
Yeah, all the utilities for the structure are all going to be above. I mean, obviously you'll have piping running down, we'll typically do like a box then, try to protect the best you can. But in regards to floodplain, it's, you know, FEMA establishes there, they're floodzones and current building code requires, you know, a two-foot-plus on the base flood elevation.
Correct, okay.
So being in the 15, you know, it's the code, it's just, you know, the structure's going to be high, unfortunately.
Okay, now let's get to the tight tank a little bit for me.
Yeah.
How much use before that tank has to be emptied?
So it's a 2,000-gallon tight tank for a one-bedroom seasonal home. You know, we'll have a plan in place for tank maintenance pumping, we'll come up with a pumping schedule, but the Board of Health will probably require at least...
That's what I'm getting at. There should be a requirement, maybe in the decision in our advisory report, that a schedule was put together.
Yep.
To ensure that this tank gets pumped.
Correct.
Mr. Grandy, if I could interrupt you for a moment, the Board of Health is required to do that as part of their findings, and they're also required to make sure that the alarm system for the pumping is in place and functioning.
Right, and I was getting... Thank you, I understand that. I just wanted to get it out so everybody understands it.
Yes.
There's also an alarm in this tank, so if it gets to a level, it's going to alarm at the house.
Yeah, so in the proposed conditions, all of those, all of those are in the part of the septic system design. So there'd be an audible alarm in the house with a float system in the tight tank.
Next big question. Are there any tight tanks out in Saquish Now?
Yes, and there's, there's tanks and leaching fields as well. I know Merrill has done a few out there somewhat recently. I'm not sure how or if they've actually been installed, but, you know...
But these tight tanks are in the coastal dunes.
How many?
Yeah.
I don't know a number.
Just some of them, yes, none, zero, one?
You know, you think about, everyone out there has some type of a septic system, right? Unless they're using a composting toilet. But I would say at least, at least 50% of the homes out there are on tight tanks.
Okay.
And there's probably a good 25 or 30% that may be a little bit more inland from the coastal dunes. Still in the resource area, maybe the buffer zones, but there are people out there with conventional Title V septic systems as well.
Well, you're staying within the same footprint, you're raising it up out of the velocity zone.
Yep.
You're putting a tight tank in, which is better than a cesspool, especially out there on the ocean and the coastal dunes. So it's an improvement as far as my opinion.
Correct. And, you know, I know there's a lot of hesitation for tight tanks. I know it's kind of like a last resort system, but again, given the seasonal use of the property, it's not a large structure by a bedroom count. And with a pumping schedule in place, I mean, there's pumping companies that go out there on a regular basis. So again, and it's also, it's 2,000 gallons, which is, you know, the code minimum for a tight tank, be it a one-bedroom or a two-bedroom. So it's got, there's plenty of capacity and storage in that.
All right, okay. Anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Grandy, I have some additional comments.
Okay, Ms. Keane?
Yeah, thank you. So, you know, the discussion about the tight tank, Title V is very clear that tight tanks are not allowed in a coastal dune. And so the determination of the coastal dune is obviously under review by the Board of Health and the waiting system, et cetera, for keeping the tight tank in a floodplain. And I think that they will make those determinations. But I would like to clarify a statement that the petitioner made, just for the people that will watch this film in the future, because there is no such thing as grandfathering a cesspool. That doesn't exist. A cesspool is a failed septic system by definition of Title V. And when you rebuild something, in other words, they're going to take the whole structure down and there is a rebuilding. So once you rebuild a structure, that cesspool is no longer, the failure then is enacted. In other words, people in Plymouth who have cesspools that are functioning, until they rebuild or there's a change in property ownership, unless it's a relative, that cesspool can remain in use. But then the failure kicks in. So I don't want people to ever think that there is such thing as grandfathering in a cesspool that doesn't exist in our state laws or our local laws. Thank you.
If I could just make one comment on that?
Please.
So obviously cesspools have been used for many years until Title V regulations came into place. Cesspool is a septic system. It retains septic waste. So my only comment is there is a stipulation that a system that's been in place prior to 1995, there is a regulation that does allow a replacement, you know, for this circumstance.
Well, that would be for the Board of Health to determine in your application process.
Yeah, that's why I just, you know, there is regulation, that was my only...
No need to go back forth on law. I don't have it in front of me, written in front of me.
Yeah, I don't either, so...
And Ms. Keane was the chairman of the Board of Health at one time, so I think she knows the regulations pretty well.
I know it pretty well, plus I'm a certified septic inspector, so I have two credentials.
So that you will go through the Board of Health?
Yeah, absolutely.
Correct.
Okay. Is there anything else, Ms. Keane, that you wanted to add?
No, I just didn't want that statement about grandfathering in a cesspool because it doesn't exist to sit out there in our video without clarification. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate it.
You're very welcome, thank you. Any other? David?
I am in favor of this petition. I do have some additional conditions to suggest, but that'll be in discussion, so I would move approval of this application for ZBA case 4125 at Gurnett.
If you'd like to add the things that you would like to have added?
Yes, I'd be glad to do that.
Please.
So to the conditions, I think condition number two about the de-watering plan, I think we can delete because I understand the arguments to be done with Title...
Not being able to pump the ocean?
Yeah. But I would like to add the usual taxes and liens condition. I would like to add a condition that this project must meet the Board of Health requirements for both well and septic system in entirety. And I would like to add a condition that the applicant incorporate rainwater storage and reuse as part of their design. Not being specific, but just I think that'll be great, whether you use that for non-potable water or showers or whatever. So with the addition of those three conditions and the deletion of condition number two, I move approval.
Okay. Discussion? Hearing none, do we have a second on the motion, which includes staff's recommendations also?
Yes, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? David?
Yes.
Ms. Keane?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Good luck at the zoning board of appeals, sir.
Thank you, everybody, appreciate it.
And I also just have a typo to correct Lee. The top of page four, the Conservation Commission is noted as 3351, but in conditions, it's noted as 351. So it's just, just make, and 3351 is the correct number. Just want to be airtight on this. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Okay.
And good luck.
Good luck. I see nothing under other business unless somebody has other business that was not anticipated?
Mr. Chairman?
Remember the puck drops in 10 minutes.
On the back, on the back page, their monthly master plan update.
Yeah, for May 22nd meeting.
Okay, so not today?
Not today.
Oh, okay. I'm interested in the master plan.
Well, then you can certainly come to the meeting or watch us on Zoom.
We've just started to add any future meetings where we have something pending. We've just added that to the bottom.
So we know what's coming up.
So you know what's coming up at the next meeting, or at least what's scheduled at this point.
Okay.
I would like to make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor, Ms. Keane?
Yes.
To adjourn? David?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cal?
Yes, go Bruins.
Go Bruins, and myself, yes. This evening's meeting of the Plymouth Planning Board and Go Celtics is now adjourned.
Recording stopped.